Welcome, everyone. We respectfully acknowledge that the community of the municipality Highlands East is located in the Treaty 20 Michisiegag territory and the traditional territory of the Michisiegag and Chippewa nations collectively known of William Tree First Nations. The community of the municipality Highlands East respectfully acknowledges that the Williams Trees First Nations are the stewards and caretakers of these lands and waters in perpetuity and that they continue to maintain this responsibility to ensure their ensure their health and integrity for generations to come. Roll call.
As I call your name, please answer here or present. Counselor McKenzie.
Present.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Ral.
Present.
Counselor Strong.
Present.
Mayor Burton.
I'm here. Is there any disclosure between your interests? Saying none. Approval of the agenda.
That the agenda for the regular meeting of council of August 12th, 2025 be approved and circulated.
Someone move. Counselor Strong, Secretary Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Minutes.
Um, yes, counsel, just want to draw your attention. Um, on our previous meeting of July, uh, I did, um, say with respect to nine point eight under public works pertaining to the request to assume roadway Studio Lane, I stated one million for liability where it should have been five million. So I just wanted to make you aware of that and it is corrected in the minutes. That council for the municipality of Highlands East approves the minutes of the special council meetings, there being two on July 15th, 2025. Be approved.
Someone move. Counselor McKenzie, Secretary of State, Deputy Mayor Ral. All in favor? Carried. Uh, this morning, under delegations, council, we have Terry Gervais, uh, Lumex Group, our fire master plan. Welcome, Terry.
Good morning, your worship. Everybody, can you hear me okay, your worship?
Uh, we can hear you, Terry. We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Oh. Alright, now it's brought me up, so you should be able to see me. There we go.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good morning. Uh, thank you, your worship and council for allowing us some time to present um, the fire master plan uh, for your municipality. Um, I do have a short PowerPoint presentation and um, certainly open to questions at uh, any time. So we can move right to the slide number two, please. So part of our guiding principles for your project, um, Lumex guiding principles is, you know, we want to make sure that we look at what's the best fire protection services for the safety of the firefighters uh, in your municipality. And in addition to also what's the best fire protection services for the residents um, of of your municipality. And of course, what goes hand in hand with that, there's always that, you know, what can you afford? And and um, so we also looked at what's the most cost effective uh, fire protection services. And on top of that, with the ever changing municipal world, and of course, the ever changing fire services world, we looked at areas that we can help you forecast unavoidable unnecessary future costs. Excuse me, um, let the facts guide our position, uh, decisions and recommendations. So, um, the document is based on fact fact and quantifiable facts. Uh, they're based on, it's based on applicable standards and legislation uh, that are that meet in the province of Ontario, but we've also provided some guide or best practices uh, for the fire service and for the chief um, that they they can use as well too. Next slide, please. And you can go right to the next one. Thank you. So just to recap, what the purpose of the fire master plan was, it's just a, one of them is we make sure that you're compliant with the Fire Protection and Prevention Act and any other applicable legislation. So that's pretty important for your municipality. And a lot of the act um, actually puts onus on the municipality and council, um, as well as the department and the fire chief. So be able to provide a clear picture of your current and what anticipated needs. Uh, we've tried to kind of forecast into the next five to 10 years, but as we know and we've seen in the last five years, uh, life changed for us in the municipal world. Um, so we we do our best to forecast it, but some unforeseen thing could also uh, make that change. We recommend strategies to protect your lives and property by enhancing public education, code enforcement and fire suppression services, and provide information to guide administration, operational and budgetary decisions. Next slide, please. So our approach was was we started um, with start startup meetings with the chief, um, and we engaged with the C O. We held stakeholder engagement sessions um, with the officers and firefighters. We collected a lot of data and analysts. Um, and to the chief's credit, I'm sure he was tired of me asking him for more data, more data, more data, but you're in reality, in order to forecast the future, we needed to look what you've been doing in the in the past. So uh, we want to thank the chief for his uh, dedication and tireless work of making this documented to what it is. And then I, um, then we we developed a draft, we provided the C O and the fire chief with the draft. Uh, they reviewed it and we discussed it and made any update updated changes that were required. And then with that, then the final report was, and that's what you have in front of you today. So stakeholders, um, so this is a stakeholder engagement session. Uh, it wasn't just one offs. We had lots of uh, kind of discussions all the way through the whole, the whole project. Next slide, please. And you can go right to the next one. Thank you. So the areas of review that we kind of looked at, um, you know, through your with your document, and we we talked about this when we first started this. Uh, we looked at the demographics of your of your community because um, everybody's demographics are different. So the document isn't a cookie cutter document. Uh, it's your personal, your own municipality's document because it is truly, you are different than a lot of the other communities in the province of Ontario. Uh, we give an overview of the department. We looked at your legislation, bylaws, uh, things like recruitment and retention. But anyways, there's an extensive list there that we look right across, um, the uh, the department of the municipality. Next slide, please. So these are the three kind of guiding principles for the fire service, um, not only in our province, but across the country and probably in North America. And there's three ways to um, kind of protect your community and your firefighters. Um, there are public education, which is, you know, your your fire prevention kind of programs, smoke alarm programs, uh, visiting the schools. There's code enforcement, which is your fire inspections. And the third one, of course, being fire suppression. So performing fire suppression services is actually where your highest cost because you can't foresee when the end is going to be. So a call comes in, the department has to go and they have to stay till the call is finished. So you can't protect that, project that cost. You still need it. You have to have fire suppression. It's not something that you can do without. But one of the ways that you try to look at is how do you reduce the number of calls or the length of the calls that you have to go to? And one of the ways to do that is to develop more uh, proactive fire prevention programs and public education programs, and also code enforcement programs or fire inspections for your community. Next slide, please. So your document has a total of thirty-three recommendations. Um, in the summary of recommendations, you'll see a chart that talks about, um, does, is it, is the recommendation a com- um, compliance? So is it a must do? Uh, is it, um, uh, do, does council need to uh, recommend or approve the the recommendation? Or is it part of the budget, regular budgetary process? The recommendations are kind of broken up into two. If council needs to prove it, it's a policy uh, recommendation, which is, which is what council's uh, job is to set levels of service for their for their community. Or there could be an operational um, recommendation, which is up to the chief of the department to to implement. You also see that we put in short term, long term or ongoing in the recommendation. Of course, that's our best guess, right? Um, you know, we we foresee that you could do this in this period of time or that period of time or that period of time. But we also know that every day uh, changes in the municipal world and something that may have to be stretched out longer or something may be able to come come shorter, uh, just based on circumstances. So next slide, please. Now you can carry on. Thank you. So we developed some key themes. Um, we're not going to go through obviously all thirty-three recommendations. Um, the the recommendations that provide council with the with the guide and the chief and and the department. And the chief will bring back the recommendations um, as as he can uh, based on your normal policies, whether it's a budgetary item that goes through the normal budget process, whether it's updated to bylaws or agreements or whatever the case might be. So but I just want to touch base on about five real key, um, kind of high level um, important recommendations in your document for council to kind of consider and and just kind of as the chief brings it forward to be ready kind of for it. So the first one is recruitment and retention. So we all know that the volunteer fire service has had a challenge for recruitment and retention, um, and not only in our province, across our country and in in North America. So it's something that that is very important for your department and very important for your municipality. And because of your demographics as well, without having major urban centers or large population uh, basis, uh, it even becomes more a challenge to for recruitment. So then you look at the other side of it, is you want to make sure that you keep the people that you have. Because when they leave, it's the struggle for the chief to bring more recruits into the department. So so what this recommendation, what this section talks about is ways to be able to make sure that you're maintaining or retaining people. Yes, you still got recruitment. You shouldn't, you know, uh, stop doing that, but we want to look at the ones you, one volunteer firefighters you have, how do you keep them? So so the recommendations that we talked about was having a working committee or recommending having an internal working committee of just fire service members and 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 some council, and have them look at different ways that are are you can retain firefighters and what maybe is going on in some of the other best practices in other departments. So one of the reasons that we're recommending, um, and because this is such a department and municipal issue, one of the reasons we're recommending that council uh, work with the fire services directly on this is is bridging that gap, right? It's it's having that good understanding from both the firefighter side and the council side of how to have a good retention uh, program. So so that's a, that's a key recommendation, I think, and a key theme in in the document. Next slide, please. Uh, health and safety, um, obviously the health and safety of the fire service, the firefighters are paramount and 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 your staff, um, you know. And this by no means is a reflection that the chief isn't creating a safe environment for his department. He certainly is. And they are very conscious of of good safety programs. So couple of the recommendations that we looked at, that we pulled out into the the health and safety is to kind of build on what good they're doing now and enhance it. So one of the ways would be establishing a joint health and safety committee um, within the department. And although that's a challenge because it's they are volunteer firefighters and sometimes it's tough getting them to put in that extra time, but it's a really important piece. And and yes, they can provide, they can participate in municipal health and safety committees. But the fire service that has a set of guidelines, the section twenty-one guidance lines that are developed by the Ministry of Labor, they're specific for the fire service. So we think that if you develop a health and safety committee, a joint committee uh, with representatives of of both management and and the workers um, under the legislation um, for the fire service, you can, they can be looking at both the section uh, twenty-one guidance notes and any other cell health and safety. The other one is is the wellness program. So again, going back to that retention piece is making sure the firefighters you have remain healthy and and able to do their their jobs. As we all know, uh, the fire service, um, they they see tragic things on a regular basis. And they've got all the same life pressures that all the rest of us do. So developing good wellness and health programs uh, for the department can help um, support them and their families as they go through some of these critical incidents as well. So the other one that that we've recognized in the last ten or fifteen years is cancer prevention. Uh, and how do we prevent cancers in firefighters? As we all know, uh, firefighters are prone to be becoming, getting cancer uh, more more regular because of some of the toxins that they are they're exposed to. So we uh, we we think the health and wellness committee can also address some of that. Uh, the department has also worked very hard on on addressing some of those issues uh, with the support of council, but there's some other things that can be done. And next slide, please. So level of service. So level of service is basically how you respond to certain types of calls in order to have that effective response force, the right number of people on there to do the number of tasks or the critical tasks. So there's all kinds of guide guidelines out there. There's some uh, National Fire Protection Association uh, standards out there that aren't mandated in the province of Ontario. Some of them are good guides. But it's really important for the department to kind of set its own level of service that meets the needs of your community and have it approved by council. So the the first one is to look at off-road rescues. So it because of your geographical area, the department responds to many off-road rescues. So whether it's with the ATVs or the snowmobiles, uh, it's in the bush, whatever the case might be. So what we're suggesting is to to kind of develop standard operating guidelines and training lesson plans for doing off-road rescues. Off-road rescues is not one of the the ones that a lot of departments do. Uh, but in your case, you you do uh, have the equipment and you are responsible for for responding to off-road rescues. So we're we we're recommending that you develop the guidelines and the training lesson plans that go along with it. Uh, bullet number two talks about hazardous materials. So we all know that departments responded to uh, respond to uh, car accidents or spills, whatever the case might be. Currently, they're being trained at the awareness level. Uh, in order to be able to do anything at all, any mitigation, they need to be trained to the operational level and they need to be certified by twenty twenty-six at the operational level. So uh, that's some training that can be required. People can be brought into in-house to uh, teach the the training, but it's something that the department needs to go to by twenty twenty-six. Otherwise, if they stay at the awareness, um, they can't, um, they can't mitigate on on anything. They can only watch and see and and identify it. Uh, it also is part of that certification for that firefighter certification for their level one and level two, and then hazmat awareness is the next part. So the next one goes along with your surface water rescue program. And it talks about developing kind of guidelines and trainings on your boat. So everybody, you know, a lot of the department members um, can operate the the vessel and have been operating the the boat for a long time. Uh, what we're suggesting is making sure that you get some of that down in writing in the standard operating procedures and how to trailer the boat, how to operate the boat, do the training on how to trailer and operate the boat. And it's a, it's not only a good for the for training the firefighters, but it protects both the municipality, the chief and the and the department. So next slide, please. So performance to answer response. So this goes kind of hand in hand with what we were just talking about. Um, is developed based line for response for your municipality. So, you know, have the chief doing, using historical data, and we have a lot of it now. He's provided a lot of it within the document. So you can say that if we have this type of fire, this is the number of people we expect to put on, and this is the time that needs to put on, that we'll do it, we can do it. And you do it based on your historical data. So you don't say, we're going to do this and not have the ability to to do it. So it gives council a chance to set a standard for their community and and for the department than to follow kind of that standard. Um, again, best practice is a guide, but you set it for your own own municipality. So then once, of course, this is done, then we submit it to council, or he, the chief would submit it to council uh, for your consideration and approval. And that that's related to recommendation fifteen one. Uh, next slide, please. So this is probably the the um, uh, the biggest recommendation that that I want to kind of highlight today for you. And certainly with the time that we have, it's it's not one that not one we you can solve today, but it really is something that both this council and future councils um, got to kind of look at both from a strategic position, but a financial position and what's best for the fire service and the and the residents. So uh, we have provided um, consolidation plan, uh, recommendations. So we looked at a number of things. Uh, we looked at all your fleet. We looked at all your your building stock. Um, and then out of that, we started looking in through by using GIS mapping, and I'm going to show you some GIS mapping here in a minute of what kind of coverage you might have if you have, um, if you reduce the number of stations. So and and it's not easy for council uh, to make these decisions to consolidate fire stations or move fire stations, but I think we provided enough data and certainly, you know, when it comes to the time to discuss this, um, there's the data and the documentation is going to show how it's um, the the right thing to do for your community. Um, there's going to be substantial cost savings, uh, substantial cost saving savings of over six million dollars over the the life of the plan. Um, when you look to the two thousand and nineteen study of your stations, uh, back then, uh, there were, the majority of them were listed as poor and two of them were listed as good, but by twenty twenty-nine, they were all listed as poor. And then there was two, uh, station two and station four that were listed as critical. So that's, that's a, that's a challenge for council and and it's a tough, tough decisions for council, what you do with having stations that are are that need to be replaced and whether you can afford to replace fire, fire, five fire stations. And we believe that that's not not feasible. Uh, and we also believe that there's other ways to do it. So we looked at how do we manage that? And and we come up with this, the consolidation plan. So the recommendation talks about allowing uh, chief and C O to review the consolidation plan as outlined and then bring it back to you, council, as a strategy for your consideration and approval. The the additional of the uh, savings for the um, uh, fire stations, there's also substantial savings savings in fire vehicles. So I don't have to tell you how much fire service vehicles have increased in cost and they're not going to go up, uh, going to go down and still going to keep going. And you know, last year, we seen the increase of forty some percent in the cost of fire service vehicles. So so again, there could be some some cost savings. The other issue is the number of firefighters that you have. So you have stations that are other, under the number of fifteen and fifteen is what you need for the fire underwriter survey for um, the insurance to consider that as a fire station. So by doing consolidation, you assign stations together and the plan that we proposed in the document, you will have over fifteen in one station. You have actually nineteen firefighters that can respond uh, to the uh, to the incident. It will also allow you to move some equipment more central. Right now, the chief has to put some equipment in stations uh, because they it fits. It may not be at the right place to deploy it, but it's it fits. And then, of course, you have the garage in in one of the area. Excuse me, one of the areas to to outfit. So so the consolidation plan is a phased plan. Um, we were asked to do a ten-year, ten-year plan, and this is kind of what what we've done. We've laid it out in in recommendations that it starts with a new station and consolidating uh, two stations and then and then look at moving the station down further. And um, certainly, um, I I realize council will want to have more in-depth discussions on this before they they move forward. That next slide, please. So this is just a snapshot. There are a series of maps in there, but um, this is a series of snapshots of having the current uh, five-station deployment mo- model and going to a three-station deployment model. So we did this with GIS mapping. Uh, so it's based on your road speed and your road network. So it's accurate. In the old days, we used to you know, draw circles around and use string and and measurements and drives and, but now we do it with GIS mapping. So excuse me, the the um, one on the left shows the current uh, deployment model in fifteen minutes of all the stations that you have. So you can see that the coverage areas is pretty good. That's all the areas that is in green. But if you look at the map on the right, if you look at the three-station model in the fifteen-minute drive time, you still will have the exact same coverage. However, what you'll have is you'll have firefighters assigned to the stations rather being fragmented, but you also will not have to worry about replacing five stations. However, you have, then you would only maintain three in the fleet. So the answer will always come up, but what about our insurance? So as we said on the, in the five-station model, your insurance is classified if you have fifteen at the stations. You don't have that currently. On the, on the right one, you're still doing the same amount of uh, area, but you will now have fifteen people. They will actually be be fired, um, classified as as fire stations. So last slide, please. So your worship, I know that was very brief, uh, and there's a, there's a fair amount in that document. So um, if uh, anybody has any questions uh, through your worship, I'm I'm more than happy to answer. Uh, just one last thing, I'd really like to thank the chief uh, staff, the C O for all their hard work in this document. It it um, it is a lot of work. Don't underestimate the amount of time that they have, they've had to spend on this and uh, they were very positive, very proactive and and uh, uh, very responded to our our questions on it very timely. So I want to thank them for that.
Alright, thanks very much, Terry. Questions? Angela.
Yes, with the stakeholders and at each fire department and and there was consultation with the firefighters, were the firefighters evenly, like so station two, which is going to be affected as a closure, were there volunteer firefighters that live in the Highland Grove area and the same with Potash um, fire station two, were they involved in in these talks?
Through your worship, um, the the uh, all the firefighters from every station were involved. Um, the the questions that were talked during the stakeholder sessions did not discuss the consolidation plan because it was done early in the process. It was more uh, the questions are more designed to see um, how the firefighters feel that they're doing, um, what kind of services are they providing? Do they have the tools that they they need to be able to provide their service? Uh, we talk about health and safety, or do they think that health and safety is is paramount? Those are the type of questions that were asked to the firefighters.
Oh, Cece.
Yeah, I guess I got two questions, both related to the same, same kind of a subject. Mother Nature has not been the most cooperative group of people in her crew, as as we can see. She's put us into a very tough drought with no rain and heat that's beyond comprehension. And so a- at the end of the day, uh, once a fire starts, it doesn't particularly care what the municipal boundaries are. It just kind of goes wherever it's told to go or directed to go. Uh, so that leads me to two questions. One, um, one of the things that we uh, are probably going to end up having to look at it, we've haven't looked at it already, is uh, redefining what a M O U is when it comes to uh, fire assistance in other municipalities. Within Halliburton County, it's 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 works, but then you go out into the peripherals. And in this particular case, we've got one now in the uh, uh, Corther Lakes area, which luckily is not coming in our direction, but could very easily do that. Okay, so that would be question number one related to MOUs. Um, the other question would be, I, using the same thought pattern with fires becoming more there, more more prevalent, and we're moving our fire stations closer to our boundaries, would it make sense to go into joint ventures with 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 uh, adjoining uh, municipalities so we can bring the cost mutually down? An example I'm seeing is we're moving further north with possibly station four, which would put us almost in D I S A R. And at the end of the day, it would be a great advantage to D I S A R to work with us. And same might be said of 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 the station that might be lower towards uh, towards Highway twenty-eight. So um, again, just looking at the overall costs, the opportunity to to take fire for what it is, it's a very dangerous thing and it can do an awful lot of damage. Is there any thoughts of those kind of things?
Chris is going to answer. It probably is a question for Chris's report, Cece.
Yeah, Cece, those programs are in existence already. One is the mutual aid program uh, regulated by the Fire Marshal's Office. We do participate in that. We have a whole uh, countywide program, but we do have agreements in place with Faraday, Corther Lakes, uh, Trent Lakes, every Astings Highlands, all Faraday, all surrounding municipalities. So um, the other one is D I S A R that we have coverage for them and vice versa that they cover for us. Those are automatic aid agreements also regulated by the Fire Marshal's Office. They do pay for those services. They are assisting. It may be time to revisit those to make sure the costs are keeping up with the demand. But yeah, we certainly haven't forgot about that and other ways to explore services for sure.
Cece.
Well, uh, Chris, well, the second piece of that was any thought of of a possible joint venture to bring the mutual cost down on those that are that are that close?
I don't know what kind of joint venture you mean. We still have to purchase the same amount of equipment and so do they. Uh, we do have to account for drive times. That's where the agreements would come in with the funding. That's where those agreements with funding have to keep up with those agreements.
Thank you.
Angela.
Um, I'm always amazed by whenever we come up with these buildings that are poor, poor condition and and critical. What beams a building critical?
Um, so from our perspective, what was in the document was based on the report that you had done in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, that, so those words weren't weren't the Lumex Group. What we look at is is functionality of of the facility um, as well as kind of the operational piece. Uh, does it meet current Ontario building codes? Does it meet um, Does it meet, um, AODA, uh, that, that you have to have? Uh, the health and safety, uh, does it have the applicable health and safety, which is, you know, in this day and age is. Is the showers, is there separated bunker gear, uh, areas? So that the bunker gear doesn't, um, isn't contaminated with the diesel exhausts. Um, so those are the areas that we kind of look at. So when I, when I quoted about the critical. That was from your two thousand and nineteen study that was done by the, uh, by the consultant.
Other questions, Angela?
But the, the, the reality is that your buildings are all over fifty years old. And at some point, some council is going to have to make decisions on what to do with the facilities. Um, it, we used to back when those buildings were done, the fire trucks were small. Uh, we didn't have the health and safety guidelines that we have. We didn't have the cancer prevention guidelines that we have. So they were very, they were, they were, you know, the pride of the fleet back when those buildings were built. If you were to build that, you wouldn't, wouldn't be allowed to build that type of a fire building. As a fire station in this stage, not only because of, of OBC or Ontario Building Code or, um, the AODA. But also because of the functionality and the cancer prevention and health and safety guidelines as well. So at some point, some council is going to have to make a decision. Um, what we've recommended is, is a way to consolidate, reduce the cost, avoid future costs. As well as by, and still keeping the same level of service that you're having today.
Angela?
I just can't see, I know this isn't an argument for now, but, uh, I just can't see how you're going to have the, the same. Um, fire services when you are recommending closing two of the fire stations. I just, I, 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 I've read over this and I can't see it.
Sorry, is that a question, your worship? Sorry.
Uh, I believe it was a comment. That we will have time, Angela, to deal with that, believe me.
Just, I'm just saying, I, I just, I can't see that. But, um. How many fire trucks would be eliminated from this? You're saying that we're going to save six point four million. Um, but how many trucks will, will that eliminate from the fleet that is going to. Service all of these areas?
So if, um. On page one forty-four of, it wouldn't be of your council agenda, but of the document. It shows that there's one, two, three, four, five, six pieces of fire apparatus and equipment that will be moved from service. So you'll be able to reduce a pumper, a tanker, two rescues, one ATV and one snowmobile.
Cam, did you have a question?
A comment, not a question. I, I've given this, I have some background. With fire services, uh, uh, this is, is very thorough. It's long. But very thorough. But my comment is, I wonder how many times the statement the fire chiefs should are in there. It's got to be a hundred plus. And that really supports our plan to, to hire a second full-time deputy chief, training officer. Admin assistant, uh, all combined and prevention. So, uh. I, I think that's important that we recognize that and that's where we're going.
Any other questions or comments? Resolution.
The council for the municipality of Highlands East received the fire master presentation and plan as presented by Terry Gervais. On behalf of the LUMEX group at this August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting of council.
If someone moved, Deputy Mayor Ryle, second by Councilor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Counsel, I think we'll take a ten-minute break and, uh. Go from there.
Good. Thank you. We call meeting to order. Department reports building, building department monthly operations report. Colin.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council. So we have the monthly summary for July for council's information today. Our permit numbers, I'm sure council see are still a little lower than they were last year, but I'm just kind of waiting to see where we end up here at the end of the season. Septic reinspection program is ongoing on Eels Lake. And we're making decent progress there as well as a lot of the high risk ones are kind of fitting in whenever we have a few minutes. So. I hope when that list comes back, you'll see it a lot less than it was the last time you seen it, but that's kind of my report for today. Thank you.
Thanks Colin. Questions, comments, resolution?
The council received the building department monthly operations report as submitted by the chief building official as information only.
Someone move? Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. Thanks Colin.
Thank you.
Bylaw, bylaw operations report.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. I believe you have the bylaw report before you. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. As you can see, we're still busy. Clean and clears and dogs. Are the nemesis of this month.
Any questions? Resolution?
The council received the monthly operations report for the bylaw department as submitted by the bylaw officer.
If someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Shirt torn, shirt torn, short term license report.
Good morning, Mayor Burton and members of council. The short term rental licensing report for July twenty twenty five. Is before you. Still processing applications steadily. Staff have really still been focusing on the pending ones and following up with complaints in the absence of an S T R licensing clerk. Can note that our quarter two twenty twenty five mat deadline was July thirty first twenty twenty five and we did provide some correspondence to. Two licensees via email and on our social media as a reminder to get their stuff in. In terms of some enforcement, as of the date I wrote this, we'd received seventeen complaints on our hotline. Nine of those have been received in the last thirty days. We've placed orders on two properties and have been following up with a handful more to bring them into compliance. We've also been receiving some general complaints about S T Rs, which we've followed up with compliance as well. So our program statistics are are on the report below. The one thing I will note is that. As of the date of writing this report, which was last week, we had one hundred and sixty five identified short term rentals in and around Highlands East. A hundred and three of those have been identified by host compliance, so matching listings to to parcels and property owners. So we have a hundred and three identified and to date we've processed ninety eight applications. So. I think we're making kind of good progress in terms of getting people licensed. Still having to kind of track down the ones that we haven't been able to identify through host compliance, but complaints are starting to bring some of those peoples in. And our M A C collection, you'll see in quarter two substantially up from quarter one, so a little shy of ten thousand dollars in M A C. Acknowledging that that's four percent of revenues received. So there's a definitely a. A lot of money flowing through the through the S T R. Through S T Rs in Highlands East and as a reminder to council, fifty percent of the M A C will remain in the municipality for however. They they want to use it and the other half will go to economic development and tourism at the countywide scale. Happy to answer any questions should council have any.
Thanks. Questions, Angela?
Just just quickly, so the seventeen complaints of the nine calls, just generally, you don't have to go through them all, but what are they? They just complaints that oh. There is a short term rental being occupied and it doesn't have a license or is it noise or?
I would say about three quarters of them are operation without a license. Most of those people we've been able to follow up with and sort of get them. Starting to work through the licensing program. We've had, we have, we've had one trespassing where. Somebody in a short term rentals umbrella ended up on somebody else's lot. That was one of the complaints. You know, so some some of its parking, you know, making sure people aren't parking on private roads, you know, impeding people's access. But for the most part, it's been folks. Complaining that they think there's an unlicensed short term rental and so. For the most part, we've been able to follow up with those folks and just let them know that, you know, we've been in touch with owners or we've issued orders on those owners. And for the most part, we've been successful. We've had a couple and we knew this would happen. We've had a couple of the people who were not voluntarily in the last sort of. Year getting their applications in who we've had to issue orders or send correspondence to. Where those conversations have been quite unpleasant, but we're doing what we can to work through those processes. So. But but yeah, for the most part, it's operating without a license. We have had some some noise as well. But we have started, so I think I explained this to council, but. If you have a licensed S T R and you get a noise complaint, actually you as the responsible person get like a robo call from from host compliance. And so we've had a couple of those come in and they've seemed to be quite effective in getting people to. You know, at seven, eight or nine o'clock at night, call their renters and say, hey, you know, you guys need to. Keep it down, that sort of thing. So knock on wood, so far so good. My understanding is that as we go forward and once we fill this S T R clerk. Position and we're able to focus a little bit more on enforcement. We're going to be having more difficult conversations with folks, having to issue more orders, more administrative penalties. Or potentially consider sort of legal action. So. We're starting to see a little bit of that now. I think we'll see more of it because most people who are operating without a license know that they're operating without a license and. They're either just hoping they won't get caught or they have some moral. Opposition to the program and they seem to be willing to. Fight with us tooth and nail. So we'll do our best going forward, but yeah, for the most part, it's been unlicensed S T Rs. And I would say probably three quarters of those unlicensed S T Rs, we now have licensed applications in from those folks that have either been issued. Fully conditionally or they're in the process of getting their stuff together for us. So for the most part, it's it's been pretty productive.
Cease?
Just this is a general question, just like information. We we referenced parking with relation to S T Rs, but it could probably be anybody and they are private roads. So technically speaking. If someone is obstructing the road, whether it's an S T R or not, what what? What do the people do? Do they phone the O P P or by law enforcement can't do anything about it? I don't I don't think. How they how do they get the car moved or open the obstruction?
So luckily we have not received anything where we've had a situation where people are actually obstructing the road so far. Now, I do believe and certainly our bylaw staff can correct me. I do believe our parking bylaw does note that you should that you're not allowed to park on sort of on the right of way for a private road as well. Ultimately, you know, if someone sort of parked in the middle of a road or something like that, generally speaking. The property owner of that right of way would be in a position to to get it towed. So if you access sort of over somebody else's private road. Alternatively, in a situation where you're not able to get past somebody to get to your own property down a private road. Generally speaking, you would call O P P because O P P would do deal with situations where legal access to a property is being blocked. Whether that's a car, blocks, boulders, a gate, that kind of thing. So that would be the follow up. Thankfully to date, that's not been something we've been terribly concerned with.
Thank you.
Other questions? Resolution?
The council received the report short term rental licensing report July twenty twenty five from the director of the short term rental licensing program.
Like someone move? Deputy Mayor Riles, second by Counselor Lewis. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Counsel, I think we'll leave our regular meeting of council.
The council committed the regular meeting of council for the scheduled public planning meeting and if you declared open to discuss the following bylaw amendments made under section thirty four of the Planning Act. As amended pertaining to applicants Pratt, Westaway and Yakutu.
If someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you.
The participants for the planning meeting wish to share the sentiments of the land acknowledgement statement delivered earlier at the start of the regular meeting at this time.
And at this time, I would ask Kim Roberts, our junior planner, to begin the public planning meeting.
Thank you, Robin. This is a public meeting under section thirty four of the Planning Act. The purpose of this meeting is to is to ensure that sufficient information is made available. To enable members of the public to understand and provide comment on zoning bylaw amendments that are being considered by council today. If you wish to be notified of council's decision regarding the applications being discussed today, then please ensure that you contact Robin Rogers, our municipal clerk. So with that said, through you, Mayor Burton, I'll go through the first of our three files this morning. Our first application is for rezoning applicants David and Brenda Pratt. The subject property is located at lot twelve, registered plan two oh five. And part of the original shoreline road allowance in front of lot twenty six concession fourteen, which is described as part one on plan nineteen R one one oh nine six. It's in the geographic township of Glamorgan, now in the municipality of Highlands. The civic address here is ten fifty six point trail. Our tax rule number for this property is four six oh one nine oh three triple zero zero six nine zero zero. And our file number is R Z fourteen twenty twenty five. As of this morning, staff have received no public or agency comments on this application. And so at this time I will give an overview of the application for council's consideration. Bear with me just a moment. I'll just get my report open here. Okay, so today's application was rendered complete on July twenty third twenty twenty five. As noted previously, the applicants are David and Brenda Pratt. At ten fifty six point trail, which is on Stormy Lake. The applicants are in the process of purchasing their abutting shoreline road allowance and they require planning relief as a condition of the final approval. Council did pass a bylaw to close the shoreline road allowance and convey it at their June seventeenth twenty twenty five meeting of council. Provided that planning relief was attained by the applicants. So the subject property is on Stormy Lake. The resultant lot area following the shoreline disposition. Is three seven, three thousand seven hundred and eighty four square meters, so point point three seven hectares, but a hundred and three meters of shoreline frontage. The property is occupied by a dwelling constructed in nineteen seventy eight with a basement addition in two thousand and two. This is wholly located on the applicant's property, but is not compliant with the six meter side yard setback of the L S R zone. Furthermore, there are some accessory buildings on the lot, two sheds, a hot tub and a shoreline deck that require relief from section three point one of the bylaw. So the proposed bylaw would recognize the following. So the lottery is deficient for a limited service residential zone. So we would be recognizing that point three seven hectares. We would be recognizing that the dwelling is three point four five meters from the east lot line where we normally require six meters. And there is a wooden shed in the rear of the property that's a little more than half a meter from the east lot line where we currently require two meters. And there is also a shed located in the front yard, which is fifteen point nine meters from the high watermark. We require. Twenty meters as per section three point one of our or three point three one of our bylaw, pardon me. And finally, there is a deck or there is a hot tub located on a deck between the dwelling and the high watermark. This is the front yard, so we need to give it relief, though it does meet that twenty meter setback. And they do have an existing shoreline deck that is twenty nine point one square meters. The bylaw permits fifteen square meters. But the location of that deck would otherwise be permitted. So this file is kind of a tidy up for the property. They're not proposing any new structures. On the site, we're just recognizing what is there so that they are compliant with the zoning bylaw for the shoreline closure. When we look at our policy, the provincial planning statement doesn't really address accessory structures. The uses here, which is a cottage recreational residential or a year round residential use is permitted. The county official plan recognizes this land as rural as well, same permitted uses. So there's no issues there. It does note that redevelopment in shoreline areas should maintain the greatest setback possible. In this case, we're not redeveloping, redeveloping anything. We're just acknowledging existing structures. So we consider this to be generally compliant with the the county plan as well as the provincial policy statement. And finally, with regard to the Highlands East official plan. We permit, this is considered a shoreline designation. We permit single detached dwellings and the appropriate accessory structures and buildings. That these are all permitted within this designation. I will note something that we've pointed out to council in the past before that we do have a policy regarding shoreline road allowances. That requires property owners when buying their shoreline to to resolve. Issues of noncompliance with the bylaw either through an amending bylaw or by removing the structures. So there's only two structures right now in the shoreline road allowance that frame shed. Which maintains a fairly substantial setback from the water's edge and is truly being utilized as a shed. As well as the shoreline deck, which just requires relief for its size. Staffer of the opinion that provided the the regulations that we're looking to impose in the amending bylaw are included. This would conform with the municipality's official plan. And part of that regulation is that we won't allow additional structures within the twenty meters because we're letting them have the shed and the oversized deck. So everything else will need to. To meet a twenty meter setback in the future. Just a quick note, this is a small pie shaped lot and those are tough to to comply in terms of setbacks further back from the water because the lot narrows and gets tighter. So the relief would just create some some compliance there. The lot is well vegetated and the principal structures on the lot meet the twenty meter setback. So we have no concerns about the relief required today. As I noted, we don't have any comments from the public or from agencies in support or opposition. And so staff's recommendation today is to prove approve the proposed bylaw that's on the agenda today by council. And I'm happy to answer questions should council have them.
Any questions? Seeing none.
Great. So through you, Mayor Burton, we'll now move to our second file, which is David Westaway. This is a an application in part lot sixteen concession fourteen in the geographic township of Glamorgan, now in the municipality of Highlands East. The civic address here is eighteen ninety five Ripple Rock Drive and the tax rule number here is four six oh one nine oh three triple zero. Zero three four zero zero and our file number is R Z sixteen twenty twenty five. As with the previous application, as of this morning, no comments have been received from agencies or the public. And I will provide a short overview of this application as well. So Mr. Westaway owns a residential lot at eighteen ninety five Ripple Rock Drive on Koschlong Lake. The property is two point five acres, roughly one hectare in area and is a point lot with frontage on Koschlong Lake on three sides. The property is accessed via Ripple Rock Drive, which is a privately maintained road over which the subject lands have a legal right of way. The lot is currently well vegetated. It is occupied with a single detached dwelling, a guest cabin, several sheds, a pump house and a privy. The property has a class four septic system on site to service the dwelling and the guest cabin. The property owner here does not own the shoreline road allowance, although municipality does. There are a handful of accessory structures, two pump houses, so there's a fire pump house. And a regular sort of pump house for the dwelling, as well as a couple of sheds located within twenty meters of the lake. Koschlong is regulated by a dam and a portion of the shoreline road allowance may be underwater. So staff aren't in a position to determine whether or not these accessory structures are located. On the subject property or on the shore west away that we're not in a position to recognize those structures today. And that if he wanted to have those structures recognized, he would need to get a survey. And make an application probably to purchase a shoreline road allowance. The purpose of the application today is requesting relief from section three point one F five of the zoning bylaw. Which limits the total floor area of a garage in a shoreline zone to seventy square meters. The applicant wishes to construct a garage with a floor area of a hundred and five, one hundred point five square meters. Which will include a storage attic that has a floor area of forty point two square meters. I will note that this is a storage attic. Um, I will note that this is a storage attic, um, this will not be a loft or, or kind of other ways habitable space. Um, so this won't require relief from the height provisions of our bylaw, as it's not more than five point five meters in height. And uh, the garage will be utilized as a storage building with a personal workshop, um, and that's a permitted ancillary use here in the shoreline. Um, the garage would comply with the rear yard setback and the twenty meter setback to the high watermark of Koschlong Lake. Um, in terms of our policy analysis, we're pretty similar to what we're looking at before. Um, this is solely relief for an accessory structure, um, and it's supporting the existing limited um, residential or recreational cottage use of the lot. Um, again, in terms of the county plan, we're um, maintaining the twenty meter setback that's imposed on lots of record through our, our plan. Um, and the proposal does not include any shoreline alteration or removal of trees uh, within twenty meters of the lake. Um, it will also be subject to site plan control, which will limit. Future vegetation and tree removal on the shoreline as well, so we believe this is otherwise can, in conformity with the county's plan. Um, with regard to the municipality's official plan, uh, this is in the shoreline designation. Uh, Koschlong Lake is a cold water lake, trout lake at capacity for development. Um, staff did note that there are no um, mapped natural heritage features, so fish habitat, uh, wetlands, that sort of thing. Otherwise located on or adjacent to the slot. Um, single detached dwellings and their appropriate accessory structures such as a garage or workshop are permitted within the shoreline designation. Um, council will note that we do have design standards and guidelines in the shoreline de- area. Um, you know, requiring that we have appropriate setbacks and maintaining vegetative uh, buffers along the shoreline. Um, maintaining appropriate building heights. Um, a- and staff believe that given that this garage will exceed thirty meters from the high watermark. Um, and is compliant with the height regulations of our existing zoning bylaw, um, the proposed amendment is can, uh, is in conformity with the municipality's plan. Um, so the staff have no concerns in terms of the setback, the height, uh, the location of this garage, it's in an area that's already sort of. Fairly well cleared, um, and we have uh, executed and sent down for registration a site plan agreement. That will uh, require that no kind of additional clearing or development within twenty meters of the high watermark of the lake will, will take place. Um, and as noted above, we haven't received any comments from the public or agencies in support or opposition to the application. And so staff are recommending that we approve uh, the proposed bylaw at today's council meeting. And so, um, does council have any questions regarding the planning report provided?
Questions? Seeing none, Kim.
So through you, Mayor Burton, I do believe Mr. Westaway is in attendance today, if we could promote him.
Hello, I'm here.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Westaway, um, following the planning report, did you have any comments you wanted to provide to council?
No, we, I just appreciate, uh, you know, Kim, you presenting the, the information and, you know, we certainly enjoy the Hellburn Highlands and uh. We are looking to continue to enjoy that, uh, again with the garage will help with uh, certain our recreational use and continue that, that piece, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Westaway, through you, Mayor Burton, does council have any questions for Mr. Westaway at this point?
Seeing none, Kim.
Okay, thank you very much for your attendance today, Mr. Westaway. Um, I will move to our third file, uh, so our third uh, application today is for Chris Yacato. Um, this property, this file is located in part lots twenty eight and twenty nine concession thirteen. And part of the original shoreline road allowance in front of lots twenty eight and twenty nine concession thirteen in the geographic township of Glamorgan. Now in the municipality of Highlands East. The civic address for this property is ten thirty nine Ferret Trail. And our tax rule number is four six oh one nine oh two triple zero eight five six zero zero. And our municipal file number is R Z eighteen twenty twenty five. Um, as of this morning, no comments have been received in support or op- opposition from agency or, or the public. And so at this time, I will ask our municipal planner, Chris Jones, to kindly provide an overview for this report.
Morning, uh, Mayor and Council, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Chris.
Uh, so this is application R Z eighteen twenty twenty five, um, part lots twenty eight, twenty nine concession thirteen, former Glamorgan. Applicant's name is Yacato. And these folks are lo- located at ten thirty nine Ferret Trail on Stormy Lake. Uh, the application is motivated by a um, a um. Application to uh, transfer the original shore road allowance. And if we scroll forward into figure two. Uh, you see the uh, part one being the shore road allowance proposed to be transferred or disposed. Uh, and so the um. The uh, that, the transfer is going to require this, this application or, or precipitates this application. Uh, cause as you can see, the, the dwelling is located in the uh, required uh, twenty meter setback. And there is a uh, a boathouse and an attached deck. Um, that also uh, are uh, subject to relief in the application. Uh, that house, I believe, has a setback of about ten meters. And uh, the, um, the boathouse is um, just shy of three hundred square feet. Has a flat roof, it's not, uh, it's mainly over the water, but it's uh, it's not a wet slip boathouse, it is, it is dry. Um, and uh, they, uh, it's accessed uh, from the uh, there's no lake facing door. It's accessed from the uh, deck, from that attached deck. Um, so the odds council is aware, um, few things in our official plan. Um, um, boathouses over the water are, are not a permitted use under the official plan. The, the consideration here is, is, and I have been to the property, is there's, there's no doubt in my mind that. That this building is, has been here for a long, long time. And so in consideration then again of, of our disposition policy in our official plan. Um, which, which al- allows uh, consideration for existing, for either the removal of existing structures in the shoreline. Or consideration for relief in the form of zoning amendments and agreements. Um, I, I really have no issue or concern recognizing that existing structure. Provided our, our bylaw, which, which I believe is on the agenda today, essentially reflects. Um, that building as it is today, when, in terms of uh, height and function. And uh, uh, and it won't allow expansion or use of the rooftop in a um. As a, as a patio or amenity feature. Um, now the lot itself is, is about a half an acre, the uh, the, the shoreline is in a. Um, relatively natural condition. And um, so on, on balance, as I say, I'm, I'm uh, supportive of the application to recognize the. Location of the existing dwelling. As well as the existing boathouse and, and uh, and deck, which is uh, a little bit oversized in terms of our uh. Our minimum standard in the bylaw. Uh, that's my summary, um, Mr. Mayor and Council, if there's any questions for me, just let me know.
Questions? Seeing none.
Thank you, Mayor Burton, um, so through you, I do believe Mr. Yacato is in attendance today. Um, if we could promote him so he could have an opportunity to speak to his application. Chris, I do see that you've been promoted into the meeting and you are muted, did you have any comments you wanted uh, to provide uh, to council prior to moving on?
Oh, my ap- my apologies, I um, I, I was, I guess held somewhere else, but now I'm back, so thank you. Thank you, your worship, thank you, council, uh, Mr. Jones and, and Kim for walking us through the process. I just want to say it's all for, you know, um, our family's use, we've been coming up there for forty eight years and continue. And hope to continue coming up, and we'd adhere to all uh, requirements set by uh, planning and bylaw. And um, it's just for our use and, and no, we would never um, expand its footprint or. And it's certainly not go- ever going to be for an S T R. And it's just for our, our family, so thank you very much, and we look forward to working with uh, the planners and bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Yacato, um, through you, Mayor Burton, does council have any other comments or questions for Mr. Yacato before we finalize the public meeting?
Comments or questions, seeing none, Kim.
Thank you, uh, so thank you, Mr. Yacato, for your attendance today. Um, so that concludes our public meeting um, this morning, and we are ready to, to proceed back to, to the regular meeting, thank you.
The council adjourned the public planning meeting at ten fifty two A M and that council reconvened to the regular meeting of council.
If someone move, Deputy Mayor Ryle, second by Counselor McKenzie, all in favor, it's carried. Uh, public planning meeting recommendations?
The council received the planning reports pertaining to Pratt, Westaway and Yakatu. And that council approved the rezoning amendment bylaws for Pratt, Westaway and Yakatu at the August twelfth, twenty twenty five regular meeting of council.
Someone move, Counselor Strong, second by Counselor McKenzie, all in favor, it's carried. Well, council, we're back to fire, fire department monthly operations report, I think Brittany's gonna fill in and Chris is busy right at the time.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, uh, Chief Bur- uh, Chief Burton, Chief Bowman had to go to, uh, is attending a fire call. So I'll just briefly go through his monthly report for your information. So to date, thirty nine calls for July, a hundred and sixty eight calls to date. Uh, Chris has provided the breakdown of the response type per station uh, for council's information. Uh, also for note, uh, Chris has completed nine S T R license, uh, fire safety inspections. And on July the sixth, he did attend the Billings Lake Codagers Association meeting. To provide some information with regards to the fire department, um, and be available for any questions that, um, the association had for him. And that is it.
Okay, questions? Angela?
Yeah, ju- just. With the fire ban being it, uh, being on, I just want everybody to understand, what are the fines if somebody has a fire, an open fire? Because it, it just puts everybody at risk, and I think that there's a few I've heard. You know, they're looking across the lake and they see a small fire still happening. So, and, and if somebody sees something like that, who do they call when, uh, after hours?
Yes, through you, Mayor, so uh, I have to verify fines, but I also, I do understand that it's all based on truck time. So depending on the response, the vehicles that are gone out, the number of hours, they will be billed back for those services. And if anyone sees any smoke or any burning, please just call nine one one, don't email the office, don't try to get a hold of the fire chief. Nine one one is the only way that they'll know exactly a location to go and to extinguish the fire.
Cease.
Again, it's just a public information question. Let's assume for the sake of argument that they have a fire and the fire gets out of control, and it's their problem. Are they responsible for all the damages that are incurred by that fire?
I wish the fire chief was here to answer these questions, uh, but I will follow up with Chris just with regards to exactly all of the expenses that they would be incurring, so.
Other questions, resolution?
That council accepts the fire department monthly operations report as information only is submitted by the fire chief.
If someone move, Counselor Lewis, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle, all in favor, it's carried. Uh, environment, environmental monthly report?
Yeah, good morning, Mayor and Council, I believe you have my monthly report before you. Just a couple of items I'd like to bring to your attention include uh, the fire hydrants within the Cardiff distribution system. During spring hydrant flushing, we did find three fire hydrants that were essentially inoperable. But since then, we've had Lake Shore Hydrant Service come up and repair all three, so. All twenty eight hydrants within the distribution system are functioning and provide uh, good fire prevention and suppression. And we received an inspection at the Septage Hauled Sewage Site, it's the first one we've had in a few years. And we're waiting on the results from the ministry regarding that. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Questions? Resolution?
The council receives environmental monthly report, August twenty twenty five, is submitted by the environmental supervisor.
If someone move. Deputy Mayor Ryle, second by Counselor Strong, all in favor, it's carried. Thanks, Patrick.
Thanks.
Uh, Parks Recreation Facilities, monthly report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, uh, property supervisor Jim Alden couldn't be with us this morning, so just a brief um, overview of his monthly report. Uh, just with regards to the grounds and facility maintenance, uh, so. Staff have been actively engaged with grass cutting and dock repairs, obviously some of our grass cutting has slowed down with the drier weather. Uh, which is allowing them to perform some other maintenance activities and work on some capital projects, so. The staff have been very busy at the cemeteries, uh, with cremations and laying of foundations. And the green burials project at Deer Lake is um, underway and moving along very well with the pavilion now almost complete. Uh, with regards to our cemetery database student, uh, so as of uh, the date of this report. A walkthrough and corrections with genealogical research for two of our cemeteries is now complete, including Goodrom and South Wobba Force. Uh, Rena is now also working on Deer Lake Cemetery. And she's completed a walkthrough and worked her way through some required uh, corrections. Uh, we have Rena till approximately the first part of September, uh, with the program. She's going to be nearing completion by the time um, September rolls around. And we, there's about three to four weeks worth of work um, remaining uh, to complete the project. So we may be looking at having Rena stay on for just a few more weeks, uh, to get that project complete and up to date. And that would be um, really wonderful for our cemetery program. Uh, the Cardiff pool programming, the statistics are there for uh, council's information. It's been a very popular summer with how hot it's been, a hundred and thirty one swimmers registered this year. And it's uh, been a very busy um, spot. Uh, we also, just as a reminder, for the month of August, our Saturday open swims are free of charge. And within the arena, uh, you've got your pickleball events, uh, we also just recently had the penny raffle, uh, which is through the fundraising group. Um, and that participated in July, and just a reminder that we have a variety of said, community center bookings that are taking place. And uh, throughout the summer and our staff are doing an excellent job of accommodating all of those rentals and uh, events happening in the municipality.
Uh, questions, Cece?
Uh, just a public information question, with the weather being the way it is right now. Um, when do we normally close the, the Cardiff pool and if it stays this hot, would we consider staying, leaving it open an extra week or two?
Through you, Mayor, so the last operating day for the Cardiff pool will be Saturday, August the twenty third. And we would not be able to leave it open because we will not have any staff as they will be returning back to school.
Brit, back to the pool, how um, has the afternoon swimming program gotten the forty eight?
Uh, so this year has been very interesting, what uh, Victoria took upon herself this year, we offered. Three sess- four sessions, my apologies, uh, you had your first session, which was a bit of an earlier start in the morning. And then some open swim later in the day. Your second session was a bit mid afternoon, and then the third session was later afternoons into the evenings. And we're seeing quite a bit of popularity across all three sessions. We also offered this year, which was something new, was an all summer, um. program where two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, kids would do lessons in the evening, and that would go throughout the entirety of summer. So, some families find it difficult to attend lessons at each day for a straight two-week period, so this was another opportunity for those that wanted to have their kids enrolled but couldn't do a straight two-week session.
Very good. Into the questions? Resolution?
The council received the Parks Recreation Facilities Monthly Report, as submitted by the property supervisor, as information only.
If someone move, Counselor Lewis, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Economic Development Monthly Economic Development Report? Michelle?
Good morning, Mayor and council. The visitor information center is running smoothly. We had one hundred and sixty-five visitors in July and eight phone calls. Our mineral waivers processed in July compared to the previous year. Our numbers are up with one hundred and fifty-three waivers processed in July. The Schickler and Desnont claims, as you can see from above, these claims are still very busy. To date, we have still not received notification on the lease applications, nor have we heard back regarding the request for an extension, an exclusion of time. But under the tender status, it is said, hold special circumstances apply, so that we know that it is on hold. Unfortunately, there is not much we can do, but wait for the ministry to respond. Sonaro Lake claim, Brad Wilson's report and distribution from May was approved. An additional two years have been added to each of the remaining six cells. Our new anniversary date for this claim will be now in June two, twenty twenty-eight. The Bancroft Jamboree, Highlands East was represented at the Bancroft Jamboree from July thirty-first to August third. We promoted mineral collecting, geocaching, our trails, and more. Last year's location was not ideal, but this year, they moved us closer to the action, and we were able to have five hundred and forty-four great conversations with people. The young people were attracted to the large interactive geocache that was brought, and the weather was perfect for it, and then attached is the picture with Rocky. And that's all for my report.
Thanks, Michelle. Questions? Resolution?
The council received the July twenty twenty-five Economic Development Report as information only.
If someone move. Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Lewis. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Public Works, Public Works Monthly Report?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of council and staff. Before you is our Public Works Monthly Update. As you can see, we have a few items that were ongoing. Item number four is an item of interest, which is the RFP for our Rose Need Study, which needs to be completed every four years. We've had lots of interest in this RFP to date, and the scheduled closing is this Thursday afternoon. Staff are into winter sand hauling, stacking. It started as of yesterday morning, and we hope to have everything completed by midweek next week. Sounds awful with the type of weather we're having, but we're preparing for winter operations already. We still have some work to be completed with the twenty twenty-five construction. As you can see down below, we will be starting on Glamour Lake Road. First thing we will be doing is we've hired a contractor to come in to do the roadside brushing. Staff will be doing some necessary ditching, culvert replacement in preparation for contractors come in to apply a base coat of gravel with a double surface treatment, which will be completed, we're hoping, by the end of September. Through council's previous promise to allow us to purchase two new tandem trucks, they were delivered a week or so ago, and they were officially put into service yesterday, both of them being a twenty twenty-five tandem plow truck with two of our senior operators running each of the trucks. Very happy to have them up and running. Waysite operations, we are in the process of doing an RFP for the grinding of the construction demolition, which will close on the twenty-second of August. Excited to get that completed. One of the biggest reasons is it's a little bit of an eyesore, plus I'd like us to be, get us back into compliance. We hope to have that work completed before freeze-up this fall. The starting of the process of installing the generators at the Monford and Bancroft Sites to supply power. Our operations supervisor is facilitating that, and it should be completed by early September. And the capital work that has been slated for twenty twenty-five at the Glamorgan Transfer Site, we are in the preliminary stages of doing those repairs. We'll probably wait until sometime in September, October, once things quiet down a little bit, and we'll be doing a step process to complete the of the retaining wall with new railings where people are depositing the material over top of the, into the bins. And that is my monthly report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Questions? Cease?
I don't have a question to your report, Perry. I'm just questioning something that I had a couple of calls on. Do you know in the, or are you planning in the twenty twenty-six budget to look at what could be done at the McCoslin Center parking lot and the road going from the, basically the fire hall to the McCoslin Center? It's very badly deteriorated, and it needs some pretty structural rebuild of some kind, and I was wondering if we were gonna put it in the twenty twenty-six budget?
Through your worship to Deputy Mayor Ryle, I've been in conversations with our property supervisor, and yes, we will be looking at, I would assume, approaching our CAO, making sure that we have budget numbers in there to have that replaced and repaired in the twenty twenty-six budget, if that is council's wish.
Other questions? Resolution?
The council received the Public Works Monthly Update, as prepared by the Public Works Manager, for information purposes only.
If someone move, Counselor Strong, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Public Works Department surplus, two thousand and ten, two thousand and fourteen tandem trucks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is in response to us receiving our new tandem trucks. In with the new and out with the old. So, we have two trucks that are within the Public Works Department right at the moment, a twenty-ten international and a twenty-fourteen international that I would ask for council's approval today to have them deemed as a surplus, so that we can remove them from our current asset moving forward.
Questions? Resolution?
The council received the report, Public Works Department surplus, twenty-ten and twenty-fourteen international tandem plow trucks, as prepared by the Public Works Manager. And further, the council declared the twenty-ten international tandem plow truck and the twenty-fourteen international tandem plow truck as surplus.
If someone move, Counselor Lewis, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. And preapproval for tendering of one tandem truck. Barry?
Thank you once again, Mr. Mayor. So, this is in line with our capital forecasting of replacing of aging equipment and resources. So, this is to request council approval to start the tendering process for one new tandem truck identical to the two that we had just received into our fleet. We have been in discussions with contractors, and we're looking at the earliest date would be the spring of twenty twenty-seven. So, it'd be imperative to go ahead with this tender process at the moment, so that we can keep our fleet up to the up to the standards that we require for our winter maintenance plus our minimum maintenance standards.
Questions? Resolution?
The council received the report, preapproval for tendering of one tandem truck, as submitted by the Public Works Manager. And further, the council authorizes the Public Works Manager to start the tender process for one tandem truck with snowplow equipment to form part of the twenty twenty-seven budget.
If someone move, Counselor Strong, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Perry.
Thank you, everyone.
Planning, Planning Department Monthly Report? Kim?
Thank you, Mayor Burton. The monthly report is before you. Things have remained fairly busy here in the planning department with property inquiries and planning applications in process. We have had an opportunity to take part in some countywide initiatives, like the Next Generation nine-one-one GIS data readiness workshop and the countywide GIS strap plan workshop. Both of those were held at the county, and I had an opportunity to attend with our CAO. We did hold a committee of adjustment meeting on July fourteenth. The committee approved screen porch addition to a dwelling, and the appeal period has passed. The variance is now in force and effect, and I think those folks are in receipt of their building permit. As noted during the STR overview, we are still dedicating substantial time and resources to the short-term rental licensing program to provide coverage and support while we're working through the search for a new licensing clerk. Once again, my thanks to Carmen Gallia, our planning technician, who has really stepped up. And finally, as of August sixth, which is the date I wrote this report, planning staff have reviewed sixty-eight building permit applications. You can see the application numbers sort of year-to-date for end of July as well. And I did want to provide a verbal update, just because this sort of came up. Since we drafted this report, the municipality is in receipt of a complete application from nine-one-eight-four-three-eight-four Canada Inc., which is the development on the east side of Centre Lake. We've received a complete application for zoning bylaw amendment, an official plan amendment. This will be, we will be looking at a public meeting towards the end, the latter part of September. Notice of public meeting will go out by the time we go to our next meeting in September eighth. So, myself and Chris Jones just wanted to provide council with a heads-up that that application is coming, so that council's aware before the notices go out to the public. That is all I have for council, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Should council have any?
Questions? Resolution?
The council received the planning department update, July twenty twenty-five, as prepared by the junior planners information.
If someone move, Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor Strong. All in favor? Carried. A shoreline road allowance purchased, one zero zero six Millennium Trail, Lutzeck.
Thank you, Mayor Burton. So, just one new shoreline application for council's consideration today. This is for the lands of Lutzeck. This is one zero zero six Millennium Trail. We did receive a complete application on May twenty-sixth. Our bylaw officer was out to site and has provided a report to staff. There is, our bylaw officer did note that there was some refuse on site in and around the boathouse that's on the property. Staff recommend that the cleanup of these materials is required as part of the disposition. The dwelling appears to be generally compliant with our municipality's zoning bylaw and is located substantially back from the water's edge. The plan of survey provided illustrates a two-hundred-square-foot dry boathouse along the shore of Monk Lake. This building is wholly located on our shore road allowance, so it will require planning relief to permit its location. So, the recommendation today for council is that we approve this application in principle, forward it to our municipal solicitor for circulation, and that prior to rendering the land surplus and permitting the disposition, the applicants apply for and receive planning relief for the footprint of the existing dryland boathouse, and the, any refuse or trash located on the shore, within the shoreline setback be removed, and a bylaw officer inspects to confirm compliance with the municipality's clean and clear bylaw. But any other questions, I'm happy to take them.
Questions? Resolution?
The council approves in principle an application to close and purchase the shoreline road allowance from Lutzeck, Lufset, sorry, I can't pronounce that, and direct staff to forward to the municipal solicitor for circulation. And further, that prior to rendering the land surplus to municipal need and permitting the disposition of the shoreline, one, applicants apply for and receive a zoning bylaw amendment to recognize a footprint of the existing dryland boathouse, and two, the refuse location located, sorry, the refuse located in the shoreline setback be removed, and a bylaw officer inspect to confirm compliance with the municipality's clean and clear bylaw.
If someone move. Counselor Strong, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Consent, preconsultation of new lot lands of Brown.
Thank you, Mayor Burton. So, the municipality is in receipt of an application, a preconsultation application for the creation of a new lot along Glamour Lake Road. So, as a little bit of background, Mr. Raymond Brown owns two parcels on Glamour Lake Road, a developed residential lot. This is sixteen forty-two Glamour Lake Road and a vacant parcel to the north with an area of approximately sixty-five acres. The municipality recognizes these parcels as being separate lots with separate assessment rule numbers. I do believe that these are legally merged as they are under the same ownership. I will note, back in twenty eighteen, Mr. Brown severed a thirty-five-acre parcel from the north end of this property that had frontage on Glamour Lake Road and Midell Road. It's located on the corner, and there's a sketch attached to this report just roughly showing kind of how that all looks. Mr. Brown wishes to sever one more lot, approximately the same size area and frontage as the lot he created in twenty eighteen. This lot would have approximately three hundred and thirty-five meters of frontage on a municipal road, being Glamour Lake Road, and the area would be approximately thirty-two point five acres. The retained lands would include the remainder of that frontage, the other half of the sixty-five acres, so that's thirty-two point five acres, together with that developed residential parcel, which is seven point three acres. So, the property here is heavily wooded with no identified natural heritage features in terms of the municipality's official plan and zoning bylaw. Halberton County's DUCs Unlimited Wetland Overlay does identify an area of potential wetland through the property. The property is a moderately sloping terrain, which is kind of typical of that area. Staff do note a pond behind the existing dwelling that's in, would be on the retained lands. There does appear to be an abandoned mine site on the property, so there's lots of these here in Highlands East. So, when we review the Ministry of Mines, AMIS dataset, which is the Abandoned Mine Information System dataset, this is site zero seven zero five two, which was an exploratory trench for uranium. The ministry has classified this trench as non-hazardous. Looking at our policies, this land is considered rural for the purposes of the provincial planning statement. The PPS permits both resource-based recreational uses, so things like cottages, as well as residential development, including lot creation, provided the site conditions are suitable for the provision of adequate septicage and water services. So, this subject property is serviced by a public road. It's privately served, it would be privately serviced with a well or class-four system, as there's no public water or wastewater services here. And this is consistent with the existing development in the area and the PPS. In terms of the Halberton County official plan, these lands are considered rural, and limited residential uses are permitted under section three point four. There are mapped unevaluated wetlands on the land. These are mapped, but the DUCs Unlimited mapping, and as such, the plan requires that the applicant provide, complete a site assistant site assessment, pardon me, to determine where the wetland boundaries are, if they exist, and confirm if the proposed development envelope is located within or adjacent to a wetland feature. Section six point three point three of the plan provides direction regarding mine hazards. There are lots and lots of abandoned mine sites and exploratory works in Highlands East. There are lots and lots of abandoned mine sites and exploratory works in Highlands East. Having reviewed the province's data on these particular workings, staff don't have any concerns regarding a hazard on this property. With regard to our official plan, these lands are considered rural because they're not in settlement area and they're they're not within kind of the buffer area to a lake. We do permit limited residential uses on municipally maintained roads. And the proposal is generally compliant with our land division policies. So we permit from an original kind of hundred acre parcel two severances and one retained. This would be the second severance here. And we do require that in the rural area severances to create new lots have frontage on on maintained public roads, which this property does. Our plan doesn't recognize any natural heritage sites here. However, our plan does require that where that any county wetland mapping be reviewed and assessed when an environmental study is required as a development condition. And then regarding our official plan, the severed and retained lands here would meet the minimum requirements for all permitted rural land uses. A full use rural lot requires a hundred meters of road frontage and four hectares or ten acres. This would exceed that. So an amendment to the municipality's zoning bylaw would only be required here if any environmental studies required by the county identified a natural heritage features like a wetland that should be zoned to an EP designation. So in short, a staffer of the opinion that provided the conditions we've outlined below in the report are met. This would constitute good and orderly use of the land and be compliant with our official plan. So most of these are our standard requirements. Taxes need to be paid. We have a consent admin fee in the amount of three fifty. That's for us to issue a clearance letter when we go through kind of all these processes that five hundred dollars cash in lieu of parkland is provided as per our cash in lieu bylaw. We'll make sure that the municipality is reimbursed for any professional services related to the application. Staff will review the reference plan associated with the application before it's registered. And that if an amendment to the zoning bylaw is required, they get that done. And finally, we would require that an entrance permit be received from the municipality for the severed and retained lands if required. And that would just make sure that there's safe access locations onto the municipality's road allowance before any new lots are created. So the recommendation is that council pass a pass a resolution in support, subject to these conditions, and we would provide these to the applicant and to the county planner.
Questions? Resolution?
The council received the report consent preconsultation for new lot lands of Brown prepared by the junior planner. And further, the council supports a consent proposal in principle, subject to the municipal conditions outlined in this report.
If someone move, councillor Lewis seconded by councillor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. A returner file de Costa and Sofin.
Thank you, Mayor Burton. This is the fast, final report for the planning department. So council may recall that a public meeting was held for eleven oh seven Upper Potash Road back in August, almost, almost a year to the date. August thirteenth, twenty twenty four. I have provided a reference to Mr. Jones's original planning report at the, at that time. At that time, council council passed a resolution essentially requiring that the applicants finalize a site plan agreement and prior to council considering the amendment. And so finally, after, after a year, we, we do have an executed site plan agreement that is down for registration with our lawyer. So at this point, we would like council to consider the bylaw in front of them. So just as a refresher, the proposal is to construct a replacement dwelling located eleven point eight meters from the high watermark of Potash Lake. This property is subject to some fairly steep slopes. The attached lake facing deck would have a minimum setback of ten point six meters from the high watermark. In spite of the replacement dwelling being substantially larger, larger and wider in the lateral width, Mr. Jones was supportive of the proposal subject to a site plan agreement and a shoreline landscape plan. So this was just making sure that the area kind of disturbed for the development would be revegetated appropriately and that sort of any site alteration kind of within that twenty meters would would be addressed through a landscape plan. A landscape plan has been provided, prepared by a qualified professional and staff are satisfied that that will will meet the municipality's requirements. The site plan agreement also includes language around sort of the proper, sort of the maintenance of the site and ensuring that CBCA permits and that sort of thing are appropriately complied with. So staff are recommending that this bylaw be approved at today's meeting. I can go through the the application in a little more depth if council would prefer. But in general, staff are supportive and believe that with the execution of this site plan agreement and the replanting plan, sort of any impacts on the lakes will be appropriately negated. And so the recommendation today is to approve the draft bylaw on the agenda.
Thanks, Kim. Questions? Resolution?
The council received the report returning file RZ ten twenty twenty four de Costa and Sofin as prepared by the junior planner. And further, the council approves the draft zoning bylaw amendment at today's meeting of council.
If someone move, councillor Lewis seconded by councillor Strong. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you very much.
Finance Wilberforce Minor Baseball League request for funding. Robin? Brittany?
Thank you, Mayor. Before you, council is just a quick report. So the purpose of our report today is to approve a donation to the Wilberforce Minor Baseball League. So we did receive a written request requesting a donation in the amount of two hundred and sixty dollars. So just for some background information, the Wilberforce Minor Baseball League does run weekly from July second through to and including September tenth every Wednesday. And the league does provide programming for children's ages four, four through sixteen. They charge a nominal fee of thirty five dollars per child in order to participate in the league. And those monies go towards a T-shirt as well as photos for each of the participants. So currently, we do donate use of the field and they are responsible for all of their program expenses. And so their request today is for a donation to offset those program expenses to continue year over year and to keep their costs at a minimum for their participants. We do have monies allocated in our donation account. That's not been fully expensed for the year. So if council is looking to make that donation, we do have the budgeted funds available.
Any questions? Please?
First off, I think it's a heck of a great thing. Keeps kids where they should be playing and having a good time. So I would have no problem moving to have that approved.
Second by councillor Lewis. Ruth?
Through you, Mayor. The Wilberforce Minor Ballie could use these monies to whatever program expenses they wish to offset their programming costs with. So it's a donation for them to use however they see fit. And if that is something that they choose to, that's up to the group or they could choose something else.
Kim?
Just a comment. I'll support anything these days. The change is the definition of game. Away from computers, there's something outside and physical activities.
Okay, resolution?
The council received the Wilberforce Minor Baseball League request for funding report as prepared by the CAO treasurer. And further, the council approves a donation in the amount of two hundred and sixty dollars to the Wilberforce Minor Baseball League.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Ryle, seconded by councillor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Administration?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So just a quick overview for the month. We have quite a few activities ongoing and those projects have been listed for council's review, so such as our electronics records management, accessibility requirements, along with our PSD citywide projects. We continue with work on all of those throughout the summer months. As I noted in previous month, our facility rentals automation project is now officially complete. And our official go live date was July sixteenth. So it's now live, it's ready for use on our website. And as of the date of this report, which was done a couple of weeks ago now, we have had sixteen renters use the new process. Four of those were new, with the remaining being some reoccurring events. And so far, the feedback we've been receiving has been positive. We haven't received any feedback on the survey piece that we ask at the end, just because those events have not yet been held. But we look forward to seeing what comes out of that as well. So again, the objective was to enhance our facility booking process and we integrated the Microsoft booking platform. Staff are going to be preparing a demonstration for council and we hope to have that available to you at the next council meeting. But if you do have a chance and you're able to jump on the website under our facility rental, you can kind of walk through the process and it provides you dropdown information of looking when to to book the hall. Just a couple of other quick, I'll just touch on some recruitment. So as noted previously, we are working through the part time STR clerk recruitment. Just for council's information, we did extend that deadline due to the limited number of applicants that we received. But at this time, it's now closed, shortlisted, and there was some interviews conducted yesterday for the position. So we do hope to have someone in that spot and in that role in the coming weeks. Certainly to help out with the large workload. Parks and Rec and the Waste Department, we've now completed our recruitment for a part time member to assist in those departments. Thomas Shipway started with us on July thirtieth. So he has a bit of a background in some horticulture and landscape management. So we welcome him to the team. And on the note of the human resources and payroll coordinator recruitment, the postings closed. Our applicants have been shortlisted and we are looking to conduct interviews for that position later in this week. So again, looking to kind of wrap up the recruitment and hopefully find a fit for the organization in the coming weeks. And if anyone has any questions, happy to to answer them.
Questions? Resolution?
The council received the administration monthly report, August twenty twenty five, as submitted by the CAO treasurer.
If someone move, councillor McKenzie seconded by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. County council, we haven't had a meeting, didn't have a meeting in July. We are having one, I believe it's on the twenty seventh of this month. And I guess just to report that some of us are heading off to the EMO conference this weekend. Okay, we're going to leave the regular meeting of council.
The council moves out of the regular meeting into the closed meeting and in order to discuss a matter pertaining to two three nine C, a proposer pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board. Advice is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose pertaining to the old Burley colonization road, Dillman Trail.
If someone move, councillor, Deputy Mayor Ryle seconded by councillor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thank you. Rising report?
The council rise from the closed meeting and reports the following. Council discussed the items as stated within the regular meeting of council agenda and directed the staff and officials to carry out all actions as approved in the August twelfth, twenty twenty five closed meeting of council.
If someone move, councillor Lewis seconded by councillor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Resolution from other municipalities, levels of government?
The council receiving files the resolutions from the other municipalities, levels of government from the regular meeting council of August twelfth, twenty twenty five.
If someone move, councillor Lewis seconded by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Correspondents?
The council receiving files the correspondence of the August twelfth, twenty twenty five regular meeting of council.
If someone move, councillor Strong seconded by councillor Lewis. All in favor? Carried. Bylaws, bylaws for approval? Bylaw number twenty twenty five dash fifty eight.
Bylaw twenty twenty five dash fifty eight being a bylaw for a rezoning amendment pertaining to Pratt at the August twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting, be enacted, approved and signed with a corporate seal attached.
If someone move, councillor Strong seconded by councillor Lewis. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Bylaw number twenty twenty five dash fifty nine.
That bylaw number twenty twenty five dash fifty nine being a bylaw for a rezoning amendment pertaining to Westaway at the August twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting, be enacted, approved and signed with a corporate seal attached.
If someone move, councillor McKenzie seconded by councillor Lewis. All in favor? It's carried. Bylaw number twenty twenty five dash sixty.
That bylaw number twenty twenty five dash sixty being a bylaw for a rezoning amendment pertaining to Yakitu at the August twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting, be enacted, approved and signed with a corporate seal attached.
If someone move, Deputy Mayor Ryle seconded by councillor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. Bylaw number twenty twenty five dash sixty one.
That bylaw number twenty twenty five dash sixty one being a bylaw for a rezoning amendment amendment pertaining to de Costa and Sofin at the August twelfth, twenty five meeting, be enacted, approved and signed with a corporate seal attached.
If someone move, councillor Strong seconded by councillor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. No notice of motions, confirmation by law number twenty twenty five dash sixty two.
That bylaw number twenty twenty five dash sixty two being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting of August twelfth, twenty twenty five, be enacted, approved and signed with a corporate seal attached.
Someone move? Councillor Strong seconded by councillor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Arrangement?
The council adjourned the regular meeting of council August twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting at twelve twenty four PM and to meet again on September ninth, twenty twenty five at nine thirty AM for the regular meeting of council.
Someone move, councillor Lewis seconded by councillor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff.